There you go. I give my seniors, you know, the queens.
You have to talk.
Since I've made the gavel, did anybody read the minutes and did they approve all of them?
No.
And you want to take a minute and read the minutes?
Yes.
On the last meeting, which was September twenty-second?
Yes.
Does anybody have any corrections or additions? No. I do, actually. In under new business segment paragraph, it's about my letter I wrote stating our feelings about recommendations. And it says, that made me say she feels some of the things who are striking, which would, I guess, be erasing from the tree plan, are not observed in Florida cultural practices. It's agricultural or horticultural. Okay.
What was it again, Pat? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, can, um, are there mics on?
Yeah, there are mics on.
Okay, Debbie, in second paragraph under new business, second sentence, that made me say she feels some of the things who are striking evidently from our tree plan are not observed in Florida cultural practices. It would be horticultural practices. Horticultural? Horticultural. As prescribed by IFAS, that's I-F-A-S, at University of Florida.
I-F-A?
A-S.
A-S, okay.
At University of Florida. But just really the word horticultural, it's the horticultural. Okay, any other corrections or additions? Y'all still waiting?
I'm ready to read.
I, I second.
Okay, we've got to have a first, a motion. We're going to make a motion, a way to set them.
Okay, so I'm not familiar with this. I am going to say I make a motion for what?
For to approve of the minutes.
Okay.
amended.
Okay, so I make a motion that I approve of the minutes.
We just.
With corrections?
With corrections. Look now, I second.
Second.
Okay, a vote, all is in favor?
Aye.
A load of polls? No. All right. Is there a public comment? I second one more agenda.
Sure, there's a public here and she has some comments.
Right. Can you come up here? You know I can't hear a thing. Okay. And I have the hearing aids on, I just want that to go on record. I still can't hear. And I'm just old, so.
Okay.
Take your mask off if you would. Get it, you understand.
You can hear me?
Okay, speak loudly.
Okay, I'm going to stand on my tiptoes and speak loudly, okay. And so this is public comment, this is, you haven't yet gotten to the Arbor Day celebration part, right?
No, that will be part of the next.
Next, okay. I have something to pass out to you folks. Back in February of this year, when you were working on the tree plant, I sent an email to the chair at the time, Kevin Jordan, and I had some suggestions for some things to be added to the, that's loud, added to the tree plant. And it had to do with plantings shrubs that we had lost over the years. So basically, I highlighted in even Lions Park, when they did the tennis court redo, there used to be a line of shrubs in back of the south fence behind the tennis court that, you know, it was like a visual screen and it was a sound screen. And then probably Pat Langdon and Pat Mayden will remember, on the southwest corner, the city had to take out that red bud tree. And actually, we had talked about what to put in there, but nothing has been replaced. So that's a bare corner that used to have a red bud tree. In Sunrise Park, along the west fence that borders on the school board property, the city had taken out some shrubs and a small tree, leaving that fence line very bare. And my suggestion was those plants had probably helped control erosion, so, you know, maybe that would be a place to add foliage. And then also, two hundred block of South Main Street, in 2017, with Irma, we lost a huge oak tree, absolutely huge. It's, we didn't have power for seven days because it took the lines down and it was all run together. There's some other places on the west side of town. Behind the Valero, all the foliage was removed. I think that's city property between the Valero and the vacant lot. So now everybody just sees the back of the Valero. So again, there's, there's no noise buffer, there's no, you know, attractiveness. And then I just made a note that there are other places in town where trees have been lost in storms, that it would be good to replace those with trees or done shrubs. So anyway, I've got a copy for Karen and for Mr. Harris.
Oh, shoot.
And I have a list of where we've lost trees.
Of course.
That's not on here, and that might be helpful when the, if the city wants to plant for Arbor Day. But anyway, that's just, it says copy on the top because I had given that to Mr. Jordan in 2022, and I didn't want it to get lost forever.
Okay. Take all those into consideration.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. I would guess, I don't know if Keith wants to say anything about it, but I would guess that having no trees behind Valero is helpful in a way so that people can, I don't care about this.
Yeah, that was the purpose of us cleaning that up because the people were complaining about all the garbage and people sleeping in the bushes and this, that, the other. Part of that still belongs to the doctor's office. We only have a twenty-foot rideaway in there. And where their fence is, I think it actually is another ten or fifteen feet to the east. But, I mean, it's whatever, we got, we got to clean it up now. We're getting complaints from the ex-coat enforcement, Michael Frank.
Again?
Yeah.
But they're back in there? Or they're just?
Just people throwing trash, and then there was people, there's still some people sleeping there.
Maybe bug and via.
Bug and vilius, yeah, where they can get spiders away.
They're thorns.
Thorns.
How about Spanish bandit?
Well, I mean, I'm saying.
Blackberries.
I mean, we can look into it and see what, see what we can do. Far as the tennis court, yeah, we had to remove them of eastern bushes that were there but to make the thing longer so we could be able to do the pickleball courts. And if we put shrubs back there now, it's going to take up, the cars will be hanging out into the street that we can look at maybe planting something down each side of the west fence and the east fence next to the highway. I mean, we can look at something like that, that's going to be up to everybody.
We can do a field trip, huh? And check it out and see.
We can probably do that. And then the tree on Main Street, that was that one that fell right there by Mr. Reynolds' house?
Actually, it fell, yes, it was between the Reynolds' house and the Slaughter's house.
Yeah.
It fell on the street, and then that's the one where, you know, it, it was a huge tree.
Yeah, I think it was a water rug.
Right, but there's, so there's no?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know where we would plant it because where it fell from, it fell off of one of them lots into the city right away. And we have an eight-inch main on, in between the new sidewalk and the curb right there. And then anything across the street, I think. JT, y'all have gas over there on Lake Stella side of Main from Myrtle to Lemon?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, that was a big water it that fell, that was during, I think, Matthew, wasn't it?
Nope, that was Irma.
Irma, okay, it might have been Irma.
I know for sure it was Irma because I know exactly how long we didn't have power.
Yeah.
No, Matthew was when the big tree near the tennis court split. You remember these, but anyway, this is just public comment.
Right.
Y'all don't have to, y'all don't have to do anything in public comment.
Take them under consideration for a future meeting about that.
Sure.
Okay, any other public comment? Who's that gentleman down there?
He is, this is JT, he works for the city, and he does the, um, the camera, but this is live.
Oh, we're being, oh my goodness, I see that panel up there. Was JT's last name?
Turner.
Turner, okay, I just don't.
Turney.
Turner, I'm Pat Mayden. This is Liz Gomez, Pat Langdon, in case you don't know us. All righty, well, our big pressing item is a discussion for Arbor Day 2023. And to give it a outline, the Women's Club has been a co-sponsor with the city in the past on Arbor Day. And they are having their January yard sale, not yard sale, rubbish sale, January twenty-eighth. And also the libraries have a book sale January twenty-eighth. And so that seemed like a good day to have our Arbor Day celebration. And I wrote and suggested that to Charles, and I haven't, I haven't, he's not here, so we're going to assume that that date is good. And that will be January when? Twenty eighth. Twenty, yeah. Then of course we have the nice synergy of all the people coming for all the different sales on that day. I would like to know, but Charles isn't here, what the city plans to do about what has been a tradition in the past, is that the city buys a tree and we plant it somewhere and kind of dedicate it. Do you know anything about that, Keith?
I know we always have bought a tree and then planted it somewhere.
Yeah.
So I'm sure we would be doing that again.
Okay, it'd be nice if we had a role in choosing it and talking about where to plant it, but that would have to come from Charles, I suppose. Also, the city has a banner that we always use, and I believe, Lisa, you probably know, that Charles communicates with Arbor Day Foundation. Is there paperwork that has to be done?
No.
You know, I don't know.
The communication with, and I'm sorry, y'all know who I am, Karen, you know who I am, from wherever Lisa's been, when I went south of my street. The communication with the Arbor Day Foundation is, doesn't take place when you're planning your Arbor Day event. You can do whatever you like for your Arbor Day event, it's supposed to include, you know, elements of education and awareness and, you know, everything that's in the proclamation. The proclamation comes from the Arbor Day Foundation. The, where the communication with the Arbor Day Foundation comes in, they're the ones that designate us as a tree city. In every fall, we have to submit, the city has to submit an application. And that's where Charles files that application with the city, his city. So, but you don't have to do anything to hold an Arbor Day celebration. But holding of the Arbor Day celebration is something that you have, need to do to maintain your status as a tree city.
So we, we will ask Charles when he comes if he submitted that, that paperwork.
Okay.
And I can let him. Just hold it off a little bit.
Okay.
A couple of other little housekeeping details, then I want to hear your ideas. We want to hear, I guess, right?
Right.
Okay, I spoke with Julio, oh gosh. Okay, uh, I spoke with Julio, oh gosh, who was last name?
Perez.
What?
Perez.
Perez, uh, the county, uh, the county horticultural agent. And, uh, he plans to be here on that day, and he'll give a talk if, if asked, uh, about some relevant thing to tree culture. Um, and I think Lisa knows this also, we have a new, uh, Butnam County forester. Is it Blake Josephson?
I don't remember his name.
It's a guy, his last name is Josephson. And he is working on getting trees to hand out to the people who come, which has always been our tradition. And it's always difficult to find trees and pay, who's gonna pay for them? And how many of them are gonna be, and how do you allot them to the public, et cetera? So, um, I can communicate with Mr. Josephson if you like and discuss that in more detail. But I think Julio also is. So, as personally, the conservation chair for the Crescent City Women's Club, um, I have a committee that involves Lisa DeVito and Tere Register. And right now, I don't know who else, but Lisa has, in the past, done a lot of organizing of activities at Arbor Day celebration. One of which, I can go ahead and say, we'll ask the mayor to make a speech, which she traditionally does, about the purpose of Arbor Day and the recently celebrated and the history of our celebrating it in Crescent City. Since Jenny Gats, uh, Jimmy Gatschman got it started twenty-five years ago, I think, and, and got us qualified as a tree city. Does anybody have any questions to this point? Okay, Lisa has some ideas about what activities might be done that day, and I think she has a handout for us.
Um, I do.
How did that become speaker? Because I'm sitting in the middle. I'm not fair. Because she's a senior. Oh, yes, I am that, no question.
My son Patrick.
I don't think. Not the twentieth, Lisa, right off, it's the twenty-eighth.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 you're, okay.
It's the twentieth. You said that in the next sentence.
Yeah. Okay, so essentially, what I'm giving you is basically what the conservation, it's kind of a history and, um, also what the conservation committee of the Women's Club is working on right now. Um, Arbor Day is in Florida, not nationally, Florida is in April. Arbor Day is celebrated the third Friday in January. The date is the twentieth. Um, the city usually adopts a proclamation. And the date that the Women's Club has offered to host the Arbor Day celebration, as Pat has said, is Saturday, January twenty-eighth. Um, last year it was from eleven to one. I think that's the general idea of this year. Um, what happened, basically, okay, so the planning includes the reading of the official Arbor Day proclamation from the city, uh, which would be done by the mayor or whoever she wants to go and replace, and art and photography contests, educational gardening and tree care that Pat has just talked about, and educational activities, um, for the children. Um, and of course, the general public is invited. Um, there's a couple of options for tree giveaway. Um, hopefully, the county forester will come up with some trees. In the past couple of years, the city has purchased those trees, and I have a record of what they were. Um, last year, a, a local resident suggested that one thing we might do is, um, let people order trees. The trees cost somewhere between like seven and fifteen dollars. And, um, I thought that was an interesting idea. If people wanted an oak tree or a maple tree or something, we could advertise that, hey, um, we'll take orders. We can go get these trees, and that way people could more get what they want. And, um, they would have more of a commitment to the tree. They would plan in advance instead of just coming in to see what they might get. Um, so we kind of need some direction on that. Um, and as well, uh, for this year, um, we want to repeat the art and photography contest. Last year, the high school students did the art contest, and we got some very nice submissions, and the Women's Club gave them prizes. Um, this year, the things that Pat didn't touch on, um, there's a committee of mothers and educators that's being formed, um, to do some nice activities for the children. Um, so those are the highlights.
So we need to be, um, in touch with those group of women to make sure we all on the same communication too of what's gonna happen, the tree committee and the women.
You will.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, but there'll be, last year, there was art activities for the kids and a scavenger hunt. And, um, this year, that should be expanded with something, um, weird. There's some nice ideas, um, from some organizations on the internet. And there's some moms and teachers who are willing to help with that.
Okay. I think I remember last year, the gentleman, what we got, the trees were all the same kind of trees. Florida icons, okay. So if Mr. Forester can get them for, for free?
I have no idea, I haven't been in touch with them. That's, I haven't been in touch with the forester, I don't know where he's planning to get the trees. We don't know, um, they could be little seedlings, they could be in the three-gallon pots. I don't know if, I'm sure, um, Pat Maiden will ask him, because sometimes they, they give the little seedlings, you know, the little two-inch cups, not the three-gallon pots, so I don't know.
Would it be more complicated for, um, who's ever gonna collect money?
Right.
If you wanted to buy them?
Yeah, we kept talking to person.
I can see that it could lead to a problem. Where it used to be, come on Arbor Day, give us a donation of food, or money if they wanted to.
Nobody's ever given money.
Yeah, they don't, that's why I'm surprised they wanna pay for a tree.
Well, I don't know. This was a suggestion from a resident who lives right in Crescent City. And frankly, I thought it was a good one because just, I mean, one, one thing is not exclusive to the other. Um, the city doesn't have to be involved, the Women's Club could give us a try. Somebody would have to be willing to go get the trees. But I thought it was a very interesting idea because you would, the people who would want to order a tree and buy it upfront would be making a commitment to that tree. They'd be deciding, you know, what they wanna do, so I don't, that's, um.
On the other hand, they can just go to a nursery and get their own tree, we've got plenty of nurseries around.
That's true.
But then the ideas, um, these come from Chiapini's nurseries, and they're very good, I don't know. It's just, it's an option. I thought it was a, a very nice suggestion from somebody who hadn't been involved anymore. So I wanted to, um, put it out, put it into the mix.
So we can do that and we still have free trees?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you want anything more?
I just see complicated.
Okay.
Take some of them.
Okay, so that was my question, because I received a package for Arbor Day, and I joined them.
Right, yeah.
And the trees are cheap. I mean, I can buy five or six trees, that's no problem. The problem for me was, when I get these trees, where I'm gonna plant them? Who do I talk to? So I don't mind buying the trees, I don't mind buying ten trees, but I need to find out where we're gonna plant them. And I want to support the Arbor Day because it's a big American foundation. And they planting, every time you buy a tree, they plant trees for you. And, you know, I understand our local nurseries.
But Crescent City has never ordered trees from the Arbor Day, oh.
Me as a customer, I would do it myself.
But I'm saying, for Arbor Day, Crescent City has never ordered trees from the Arbor Day Foundation because I think they're very small. And, um, they're really, really tiny and, you know, the way the grass grows here, I, I don't know. We've just never used those trees. I'm not sure what they're, I don't know what they provide and whether they're right for our area.
Well, what they told me, they sent me a map, and they told me what is for our area.
Right.
They don't send them until April. I mean, even if I pay for them, I won't get them until April or March of next year.
That's one of the problems, because the planting season here, you should plant in the winter.
Okay.
If you plant a small tree like that in Flor, that's why Florida celebrates Arbor Day in January.
Got it.
As opposed to April, which is the National Arbor Day, because of our hot temperatures.
Got it.
So, anyway, that was helpful. Yeah, there we go.
We all get that mail from Arbor Day every other week, you know? We actually would save our money on that mail stuff. Okay, I, I see here you, uh, you mentioned invite the master gardeners, and I will be glad to do that since I know a number of them. And they will probably be meeting soon and can discuss it. But they always come and have a little table, and they're there to answer questions. Uh, the thing about the tree planting in a needed location, and we got some needed locations we've discussed, haven't we? Um, whatever happened, somebody told me, I cannot remember the name of that park on Grand Rondo, past Halley's.
Culver.
Culver.
Culver. Did that dying oak tree there ever get cut down?
Yes, ma'am.
It did.
The one in the park?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Has something been planted in this place?
Well, there was a big live one right next to it, but we did not plant nothing back.
Okay, okay. Otherwise, I would say, there's a suggestion for a place for a tree to be planted. Um, so are you the person who knows what would need trees?
Uh, well, we, you know, we talked about putting some back at Harry Banks. There along the fence, in be, in between the playground and the fence.
Yeah.
Um, because we got that one that we still gotta get cut down.
Okay.
That one that was leaning over the bleachers.
Right.
And, uh, we got, we were gonna do a couple there. And then, of course, we did plant a cypress tree in there, uh, this year. Yeah, they're doing good, even with the water as high as it is right now.
Yeah, we would like it. Is there, is there any, you know what we could, I don't know, those cypress trees at Lake Stella are dead, those little ones?
Yeah.
Julio is coming next Monday, and he's gonna look at them and see if he has any ideas. But I don't, you suggested that it might be, I'm finished, uh, runoff.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if they don't get any more runoff than any of the others, they're not near that swale. They're out on where the lamb sticks out from.
Right, but there's a, there's a runoff right there where that dick tree is in the center of Edgewood. There's a little small gutter there, and a lot of that water goes across there. And then there's, there's no telling, it could just be the, the tree is stunted, I mean, because all the other ones took off.
I know, and, but there's like four in a row.
Yeah.
That are stunted and dying. Uh, well, we'll see what Julio has to say about it, um.
He'd better bring his waders.
Oh, yes, that's a good point.
The water's a little high right now.
You're not kidding. Okay, out of all these things that Lisa's listed, which are pretty much, uh, traditional and what we do and have done, do either of you see anything that you would particularly like to work with? I know you talked about the educational activities that children, uh, which they enjoy very much, same.
I wanted to expand that, um, I've been talking to people for something that I wanted to create, uh, create in the summer, like a summer camp in July where the kids can come to the Historical Society and learn about the history of the town and trees and everything. And I'm suggesting five weeks, and in those five weeks, it will be while, while the Historical Society is open from ten to two, already Cherry Register told me that she will help with the history. And I thought that would be a good opportunity for the Tree and Garden Committee to also talk about our heritage in Tree and Garden Community and make it a summer thing.
That's great, but what about, what about January twenty-eighth?
I, I am so new at it, I'm just gonna go with the flow and see how it goes.
Uh, okay, uh, Lisa has communication with people at schools, right? That you've done in the past? Are you already doing that, or have you talked to them?
Right, the, uh.
Will you do that, yes, ma'am?
Um, okay, Karen, can you hear me? Um, so far, the people I'm talking to are homeschool moms. Um, so far, the people I'm talking to are homeschool people.
Oh, okay, good.
Because they're, um, a little more available.
Yeah.
Um, but anyway, so there's a, a core group that's gonna help with us.
Oh, okay. But nothing at the public school?
Well, they'll be invited, but it's Saturday.
Okay, are you gonna invite them?
Sure.
Okay.
If you want me to, sure.
Yes, I do.
Absolutely.
Okay, and, and you are also pursuing the art and photography contest?
Correct.
Angle?
Yep.
Thank you.
We had our trial run last year, and it went quite well.
Mm-hmm. Did we get any photographs or just art?
No, just, just art.
Yeah, okay.
But.
You know, um, Pat, I was gonna tell you I have tons of photographs that I have taken around town of different trees, and I can enlarge those and just bring them to be viewed. Not to be like, you know, merit or judge, but just for the trees to, for the children and people to see the beauty of trees, and I can do that myself, get them printed.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna have a table with pictures, and they won't be judged or?
No, it will be just for them to see the beauty of the town, the trees.
Yeah, that's a good idea, type any of us who have good tree photographs.
Yes, they can join us.
I have one.
Okay.
Um, so it's not a contest.
No, it's just show you. An exhibit, that's the way. I also, if you want to, I've been, um, um, creating this in my mind for the longest time, and, and maybe I think I'm ready for it. I wanted to do a skit, puppets, and maybe I can incorporate something about trees. Like, uh, when I first came to town and I was talking to people about what my husband wanted to do with the moss of the trees, he wanted to take all the moss, and then I learned that moss are healthy sign for trees. Maybe that's something we can bring with a puppet skit to the attention of children and the public. So I can work on that myself, make it like a five or ten-minute skit.
That sounds awesome.
So I'm gonna put myself like this.
Oh, we're just, these moss birds.
Yes.
Raiding around.
Maybe we can have like little things like that to exhibit, you know? I can get the moss and make little skirts or whatever, pillows.
Um, Pat, do you still have questions for me? Or my? Okay.
I think, unless you say things we haven't, uh, haven't discussed, I think.
No.
Um, um, I saw something I wanted to comment on here. Um, educational gardening, master gardeners do that.
Right.
And tree care, and Julio.
Right, you covered all that, I think.
I don't know if we wanna have him talk again about planting trees, I think maybe taking care of them. Once you plant them, might be an issue, because we have seen a lot of people take home trees of the trees sitting there in the can six months later, or, uh, they didn't plant it, but, uh, that's.
That's a good idea.
You can't, you know, require people to do something that they got for free, it'd be nice. Anyway, um, are there any other aspects of this? Uh, there's publicity, and I, I, I will handle that. I have a good relationship with, uh, his name I can't remember, Chris Murphy. And she has done lots of nice things for us in the past. And I will make sure that it's publicized, and of course, it's, the tree giveaway is really just to people who live in Crescent City.
So you have to specify that?
Yeah, sure, I'll make that clear so people will come and, uh, garden and get our trees. Not that I need turds from garden.
Last year, I believe they came from Melrose.
From Melrose.
Melrose.
Melrose. Oh, my goodness, the trees did. Not the people going to get the trees.
Right.
Yeah, that nursery Melrose was great. So we really need Charles to form up the buying a tree and any giveaway trees and we need. I will follow up with Mr. Josephson about whether he has any trees to give away and get trees to give away. And if he can't, then we have to discuss with Charles again, is the city in a position to buy some? You know, what we want to do about that.
On number five, it says tree may be not planted on the same day as not to confuse all the other events.
Right.
What do you think about that? Is that usually the tradition and?
Well, we planted it the same day, but we planted it at the Walbert's Club, which is where the event was. And the city guys came on a Saturday and dug the hole. Maybe they dug the hole on Friday. They planted it for us.
Well, from last year in Harry Banks Park.
And we were just told about it after the fact.
So maybe at the event, if we plant it correctly, we can have a second event and advertise at the main event, this is the day we're going to plant the actual tree in this location. And whoever shows shows, see whoever doesn't show he planted.
You know who's going to show.
We got us.
But we couldn't take, have a picture made. Yeah, that reminds me. Did our Tree City sign blow over in Ian, Hurricane Ian? I noticed that the whole Welcome to Crescent City sign was.
Yes, it did.
It was one by Windex, see?
Yeah, we're supposed to be getting that redone.
Okay, would they also do the Tree City sign, which is beside it? Good. It does, it looks kind of sad. Is there anything else on Arbor Day? That anybody wants to discuss? Okay, we'll start moving. As mentioned before, Julio will come look at the cypress trees. Perhaps, he's very busy these days. And we've been talking about, I've been talking about doing a survey of the heritage trees in Crescent City. And we'd like to suggest that we start that in January. Because right now, we're on the cusp of the holiday season. And I'm not, I'm not going to be here some of December and I don't know what we want. Yeah. So unless somebody else wants to start doing the survey.
But I will start it, just my problem is I don't know what I'm going to be doing. But I'm willing to start like tomorrow when I'm off.
Do you have the information about what trees are qualified?
No, I will be like.
Seminary plant.
Okay.
And we need really some kind of map.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking. If we have a map, we can pinpoint where we have been.
Yeah. And what is city property and what is not, that's the other part of that.
So maybe the.
Is there such a map in existence, Debbie?
Karen?
Karen, I'm looking right at you and saying, yeah.
We have this, we have a Crescent City map.
That shows the city property legally?
No, I mean, to outline the city property itself or the city outline of the?
Where the trees will fall so we don't go into people's yards? Is that what you're saying?
No, but it's, it's not perfectly clear which part of the, how far the right of way of the streets goes. So we, you know, we don't want to be pulling around somebody's yard because we don't have any jurisdiction there anyway. So it's a little complicated. The current, it says here, the current list of champion trees is on file. Oh, my goodness. And will be subject to revisions and updated yearly at regularly scheduled public meeting of the Tree and Gardens Board. Whoa. So the current list of champion trees is on file. Who knows where that is? Anybody?
I can look to see if it's in one of the file cabinets, but I have yet to come across one.
That might be a Ms. Jenny question. Ms. Kathy.
But she would have kept.
She might can tell you where it's at. She don't, she don't forget.
I think it's a great idea if also this time that we do it, we take pictures. And we put the location in these pictures. So whoever comes after us when we are gone and dead, they can actually know, you know?
Yeah, right.
Okay, a champion tree. Okay, I was talking to Ms. Jenny.
So, Mr. Harris, you going to have a map that tells you what city property is that you responsible for?
Uh, no, ma'am. I pretty much know where all the city property is. And pretty much the way it goes from backside sidewalk to backside is usually the city right of way. Some places are a little further than that. So pretty much, you know, that's, that's how we usually know what's ours. I mean, some of the streets, yes, are wider. There's not a, a lot of them. I think most of them are fifty feet wide, sixty feet wide. And it's like I said, usually it's backside sidewalk to the other backside. It's usually what it is.
It's the largest of their species.
I was just looking for a shortcut. We're not going to have one.
I can look and see what we, I don't think we have a map showing all the city property, but we might could draw something up.
That might be good.
Yeah.
Be great. See, there is help.
As far as measuring heritage trees, that's going to take a couple of people to do.
You just measured the trunk?
The diameter has to be at least thirty inches or seven feet, ten inches in circumference. Whichever dimension is.
Four feet.
Yeah.
Four and a half.
So you two little ladders.
It's, it's, it's a bigger job than it seems like. It's not, not just alcohol in it. So I recommend that, that we wait and we do it as a group and we start in January.
I was joking with you, yes. I want to wait.
Okay.
I can start with my backyard, Mr. Harris. You know, my house in front of the gazebo, that one tree is that city property? My husband said that when he looked up, it belongs to Lake Stella. That property that is between us.
The one that's dead right there on the corner of your property?
The half of it, yes.
I stopped by there the other day. I was trying to find the property marker from where it was surveyed and I couldn't find it. We would have to get in there and look around. I ain't so sure it belonged to the phone office.
Okay. So it's, it's our tree now, the city and I already adopted the tree. Taking care, I'm taking care of the tree.
There's not much you can do for it. Once you know, I remember those horticultural agent in Louisiana, they said, once you know a tree is sick, it's gone. Once it starts dying, it's dead.
So half of it is dead and the other half is alive? Is that what's going on with that oak?
I'm not sure.
It's very healthy on my side, very healthy. It's just that one limb going over the road that is bad. And yes, somebody told me we just prune it very little, you know? It will come back, just trim it.
I'm not so, I don't know how far you want to trim it back, but if it's, that section's dead, it's not coming back.
Yeah, that section.
Yeah. The other tree on your side, that's, that'll be your responsibility to prune. That won't be ours.
Okay.
Anything that's hanging over on your side is.
Ours, yes.
So are you saying the city can think about cutting the dead part, the things of the city property?
I can try to squeeze it in our schedule. We're so shorthanded right now.
I will be like the old ladies of the eighteen ninety. I'll be underneath you, making sure you're not cutting too much.
But you're cutting.
But you're cutting some.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to talk about? Do you have a meeting?
Oh, the next meeting. I was going to get to that.
I won't be here that Thursday, the sixteenth.
Would you be here in January in the beginning? Maybe we can make an exception and meet at the beginning of January?
Suits me. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Yeah, we have to be in early. Well, maybe January we'll be really doing.
Yeah, we'll be on top of things, yeah.
Yes, 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 yes. Yes, it does go away.
How long are their ends on?
That's a Thursday, first Thursday in January.
January what?
Five.
We have a meeting in December.
No meeting in December?
Pat is not going to be here.
Well, if it matters, I'm out of here. You can leave.
You don't have a quorum if you don't have more than three people, so.
Oh, 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 nice mention of that. We need some members.
What did she say?
She said we don't have a quorum if there's just two.
Sorry.
Sorry. I made a quorum. January fifth, does that work for people?
Yeah.
Okay. Fifth, one o'clock. And meanwhile, we need members.
It's on the, it's on the website. It's on the website.
It's on the website.
That we need members?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a new one coming.
I have heard B.J. Laurie's name mentioned as a possible member. So what do we do about that?
I can send him an application.
You send him an application, all right, thank you. And then he has to give it to, back to you and it goes to City Commission?
Yes, ma'am.
For approval?
Yes, ma'am.
You haven't heard from any other eager people?
No, ma'am.
You don't have to say ma'am to me.
Sorry, Heather.
That makes me feel old.
Sorry.
Like when people call me Miss Pat, I'm feeling, this is not Confederacy. Well, ladies and gentlemen.
Do we have a meeting in December?
No.
No.
Unless you really want to?
We can, just two people can.
We could have it, all right.
When do you go?
December fifteenth.
Oh, we can have it prior to then then. You look it up and let us know.
No, I'm not, I can't let you know.
What day is good for you because we can come, we here, you the one leaving.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we particularly need to. It's obviously, it's busy that time of year.
I think if we meet in January, by then Charles will have a lot of these answers for you and then we can regroup in January. That gives you plenty of time.
Yeah, because Arbor Day is at the end of the month.
Yes, we have the whole month.
Oh, goodie, Christmas recess. Christmas recess.
Yeah, right. Holiday recess.
Yeah.
For all of the holidays. Are we done?
Do we have to make the call?
No, we can't because we don't have a quorum.
You can make the motion right now to set your meeting in January fifth. You can make a motion to cancel your meeting in December and make it for January fifth of twenty twenty three.
So moved.
You can't make it, Pat.
I can't, I'm not really.
I make a motion to cancel the meeting in December and move it to January fifth, nine, twenty twenty three?
Seckah?
I say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, now you say why.
Karen.
Okay, so. As long.